All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regular meeting of the Tiger-Tualatin School Board. I will call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. I did want to let everyone know that we met earlier this evening in a work session to discuss school SIPs, and we'll hear more about that from board members later on in the agenda. So with that, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
All right. Hearing that, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
A second.
Motion was made by Vice Chair Hymas and seconded by Director Zershmid. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll move to a corral vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And with that, I will hand it over to our Director of Communications, Alex Paloski, for our recognition and good news.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair Hymas, members of the board, and I always appreciated student representatives. The last, on November 18th, we had a board meeting here, and right before the start of that, I got a text from a reporter at the Oregonian, and it was 5:55 PM. And I was a reporter for a long time, and I can tell you that even though I deal with reporters a lot, when you get a text at 5:55, it is not really a good situation. So I got my phone out, and I was kind of like, wow, you know, what's this all going to be about? I'm not going to read it in its entirety, but I want to read you just a piece from that text that she sent me. So it went like this. "Bridgeport Elementary made huge gains from a chronic absenteeism rate of 36.3% in 2223 to 22.9% the following year." That's a difference of about 13.4 percentage points. And she wrote, "It's also a diverse school with a large Latino population. Can the principal and others who have worked on chronic absenteeism there hop on a Zoom call with me tomorrow to talk about the work they have done to bring down that number and what advice they have for other elementary schools?" So we all know kind of what journalism is about from our own experience. There's a notion within journalism about solutions-based journalism, and that concept there is to look at not only what's not working, but how we could change that and how things could work. So to have that public opportunity to show what's been happening in Bridgeport is really, from my perspective, is an amazing testament to the progress that Principal Jordan Mills and her team have made over there. In talking with the reporter, Jordan talked about the work that Becky Segundo, you're going to hear from all these folks in a second, or have been introduced to them. She described Becky Segundo and the work that others are doing as being lovingly relentless. I think it's a really beautiful way to describe caring for young people and never giving up. No se ríen de verdad. So I want to extend my heartfelt congratulations to the team from Bridgeport and ask Jordan to speak briefly about the work they've done and introduce the folks she's brought with her tonight.
Absolutely. Well, we have Becky Segundo here. She is our attendance secretary, and to be honest, she's the leader and the mastermind behind all of the work, and we're just along for the ride. We do what she says. That's real. We also have Tim Blackburn here, Associate Principal, and he is the keeper of all of our data. In addition to doing a lot of the family communication, he's also, he does a beautiful job of organizing everything so we know exactly what's going on. And then we have Suzie Yanas-Vanitas, and she is our family partnership advocate who works really, really hard on some of the barriers that our families are experiencing to attendance. So I think, you know, one of the things that we're all, we've all been working with post-pandemic is just a different attitude towards attendance and also folks having just a lot, a lot more concerns around illness. And so we have worked really hard. I think one of the main moves that we've made is Becky leading us in a weekly attendance meeting where we go through all of the individual data of every single student, and we focus particularly on those who are experiencing chronic absenteeism or have done so historically. And then we make a plan for what we're going to do for each of them, and that includes some kind of follow-up communication, always, almost always over the phone, either to figure out what they need, to help them out, or to thank them and congratulate them for having made progress. That's in addition to any number of other interventions that all different schools are trying, but I think that individualized data review and sort of looking at those things has been what's really made the difference. Is there anything the team wants to add here? Becky, Becky, yes, good.
I think the only thing I really want to add to that is, you know, we do look at numbers, we look at percentages, but we also look behind those numbers because for different reasons, somebody's percentage might look low, somebody's might look high, but we really try to look just past those numbers and see what is really going on with that individual family and seeing how we can help them and support them.
So again, thank you all. Congratulations. Really appreciate the work you're doing. It's awesome work that's going on. Thank you.
Thank you all. Are there any comments or questions from fellow board members?
I know, working with Becky and Mills and all of you guys, I know that you guys really care about helping our students succeed and just being there for students, and so I really appreciate everything that you're doing. And yes, Becky is the mastermind.
You know, one of the things, first of all, thank you for the amazing work you've done, but I want to say, one of the things that occurs to me that I didn't hear you speaking about is, I mean, every school, I think, across the state is trying the reaching out to students, calling the parents, you know, making, but I, there's, there's something like a magic sauce that you guys have, and I think part of it is the trust that you've built up with your students and your families. And so when you make that call, it has much more effect than it might have at another school. So I just wanted to say thank you for that, and if there was a way to bottle that as a secret sauce, we should do it, and you can give it to all of our others. But I mean, seriously, it's that, it's that wonderful relationship you have with families, and thank you.
Dr. Miles?
I'll just, I mean, I don't want to repeat everything that Director Zershmid just said, so I won't. But, you know, this is one of those areas that is a state, if not nationwide, thing that everybody's focused on, and one of the things that, and I'll talk about this a little bit later, but I was speaking with the Durham Principal today and about their efforts in increasing attendance also. And one of the things that you must be doing is making school a place where everybody wants to be and making that true for staff, making that true for students, and that shows in the reduction of absenteeism and increased attendance. So thank you for that, for that effort and making school somewhere where everybody wants to come and be and making that a happy and joyful place. So thank you.
Absolutely. Go ahead, Director Miles.
Sure. Well, just thank you for all your work, and attendance is really important, and thank you for making that a priority and getting results.
It's certainly a heavy lift, and I, just to kind of echo what I think Director Miles said, is what's really evident is really engaging with kids and families in a really authentic and meaningful way to your point where they want to come to school and they feel like they are seen and heard and valued. And so I think that's just, this is evidence of that, and it's sort of like a nice side effect because it wasn't like, I mean, attendance was the goal, but really, what are those levers to get them there? Not just for that attendance number, but so that they know that they belong somewhere. I think that's lovely. Thank you.
And I just wanted to reiterate that, something that I've said before, which is the work that we're in is, yes, it's education, but it's really people work. And this, these outcomes, the services we're providing, helping kids engage in their learning, it doesn't happen without people like you. So we're very fortunate. Thank you so much, Becky. Thank you so much, Cindy. And thank you, Dr. Mills and Assistant Principal Blackburn. You all are doing amazing work in Bridgeport, so I just want to say kudos.
Thank you so much.
I understand we have another celebration, although I'm having a hard time celebrating it personally, but Dr. Udo, I think you can, you have the floor.
We do have another celebration, and this is a, an early farewell to someone who has meant so much to our district for nearly 20 years, I believe. Patty has made the decision to retire, and I, we couldn't let her go. This is our last board meeting. We couldn't let her go without saying a couple of things about Patty. And that smile really embodies Patty right there. So Patty has just been the glue to the work that we do as a district leadership team and also in supporting the board. A couple of things that I wanted to share about Patty before I hand the mic to others is that I've only been here a short amount of time, but Patty has been a presence that has just been kind. She's been a very hard worker, and she has been incredibly patient, and with me, that's really hard to do sometimes. And I have, not once, not one time have I ever heard Patty complain. And so she normally just smiles and says, okay, well, we'll work our way through that problem, and that attitude is infectious. So I'm very bummed that I'm only going to get about eight months to work with Patty, but I've enjoyed every day of it. And she has really embodied what community service means and what student service to a school district is. And so though we are going to find, have to find a way to fill your position, there's never going to be a way that we can replace you, Patty. So thank you for all you've done.
All right. And we're board members that would like to say words, and then I have a few little treats for her as well. Director Weston?
I just want to thank Patty for all her long service to the district. It's great news that you'll be retiring for you, but I know you'll be really missed here. You are just there and show up for everyone, and thank you so much.
Vice Chair?
Yeah, I just want to echo that. Thank you so much, Patty, for everything that you have done. I have to agree, you know, one of the kindest, most welcoming person that I, that I get the pleasure of knowing. And not only that, but I always forget to email her my food order, and she always has it for me, which is just that kind of, kind of a person that she is, right? She has that attention to details, but also the fact that she just knows us, you know, she probably knows us better than we know ourselves, so thank you.
So I have to say Patty hasn't worked in the district that long because I remember hiring her, and I haven't been around that long, so it's only been like three or four years, so I don't know what all the fuss is about. But seriously, I will miss you terribly. Thank you for everything you've done. Thank you for taking care of five board members who rotate every couple of years, and you have to bring up another one. I feel like we're sort of your cats that you're busy herding. In addition to your taking care of the superintendent, which has, I believe you've had four or five? Five at this district. Yeah. So it's, it's a big job, and thank you for doing it, and I wish you well in retirement. I wish you weren't going. But thank you.
Director Miles?
In addition to everything everybody else said, I am also new, and you were one of the biggest sources of welcoming for me when I first joined, and you've always been kind and patient and full of information. And I will just say to add on, my guess is that we will lose an enormous amount of institutional knowledge when you leave because you've been around for so long. So I wish you well in retirement as well, much deserved. Have a great time. Thank you for everything. We will miss you a lot.
And just to close, and I would of course reiterate what everyone has said, also being so, not just welcoming and patient, but really helping me get my feet under me when I was new. And also, you know, I had a lot of questions. You answered them, and it didn't feel like I was bothering you, although I probably was, to be fair. But also just giving, I think in different ways, all of us some confidence to do this work because you do have that institutional knowledge and you do know all the people involved and are seeing all those things behind the scenes. And so I really just appreciate also your calm nature that really has helped me in this work as well. So we are going to absolutely miss you, and you will not be replaced. And we got you the biggest bunt cake we could because we are, we love our bunt cakes around here, so we have flowers for you and a bunt cake, and we are excited, though, that we get to see you a little bit longer and wish you the very, very best. We love you.
Patty?
Okay, I've got my box of Kleenex. I'll try to, I'll make this quick. No, thank all of you. I really, oh, I had my back. So thank all of, I thank all of you. This has been actually a dream job for me. I've been doing this a long time, 28 years, being a board secretary between Sherwood School District and Tiger-Tualatin. And in that time, I worked for 10 superintendents, trained probably five of them. I have worked with 26 different board members and have attended probably between 700 and 750 board meetings, budget meetings, different meetings. But I have loved it. I wouldn't have done it this long if I didn't. And I thank all of you for, just for being my friends, too. I know it, when you're, when you have a job, it's supposed to be a job, but I make, I make it friendly. I like to build those relationships. And I'm going to miss every one of you here. And, but I'm going off to have.
As you should. Thank you, Patty. All right, and with that, we will move to our student representative reports. So, who have a rock, paper, scissors, scissor to go first?
At Tualatin, we had our first win time last week or a couple weeks back, and I think it was a great success. I think it really helps students have a set built-in time of the day to get help, especially students who take the bus or have work immediately after school or something. So we'll be having two more of those next week. Most college applications are due January 1st, so a lot of seniors will be spending their winter breaks focusing on getting those done before they come back next year. For clubs, Communicator Club has chosen to fundraise this year for nonprofit organizations fighting to help domestic violence victims. And Math Honor Society has completed its first competition, which was a group bracket style, a round of 64. They made it to the round of 16. For sports, the winter season is underway, and Cheers already won their first competition last Saturday in McMinnville.
Also at Tualatin, next Monday is going to be our Winter Pep Assembly, so should be exciting to get students back into the spirit, even though it is wintertime. Currently, from starting today through next Wednesday, the 18th, ASB is doing the Wolf Pack Hygiene Drive, where all donations are going towards the TTSD Family Resource Center. So the TTSD Family Resource Center sent ASB a list of items that they were in need of this winter, so we're going to do our best to try and replenish their hygiene. And then Tualatin High School's newspaper, The Wolf, was in Eugene today for their Fall Media Conference, where they won Best in the West, which is very exciting, so congratulations to them. And then also on a good note, our IB students have now finished their extended essays, and many other IB students are starting on their IAs, so another congrats to them as well.
Okay, we have one important and very fun date for Tualatin-Tiger Virtual Academy. We have a winter break raffle. Students with no unexcused absences from December 5th to 20th will be entered into a raffle to win a $20 gift card. For, there'll be options for such a thing, Dutch Bros, Jamba Juice, Chipotle, Starbucks. This is to improve attendance as we are dropping a little bit as we go into winter. Thank you.
So I didn't have time to put sports on my thing, but one thing that I would like to say is for publications at Tiger High School, 15 students from Tiger High attended the Fall Media Day as well. I would like to say that I won Best in Show for Portrait Photography today, and then a staff writer for our news magazine also got rated excellent for opinion writing about the keynote speaker. Also, our Next Gen Roundtable is this Wednesday, so if any of you guys would like to attend, I would be more than happy to put you on the invite.
I'm Evelyn, and I'm for Tiger this week. For theater, we have our Princess Tea Party, Princess, yeah, our Princess Tea Party. It's going to be on December 14th from 12:00 PM to 3:00 PM at the Deb Fennel Auditorium, which is the Tiger High School Auditorium. It's $5 per kid. It includes one chaperone with that prize, but if you would like to bring an additional parent or anything like that, it'd be an additional $2. Students will be dressing up as princesses and princes, and will be enjoying tea, snacks, and games with the kids. As well with theater, we have our movie night, which is Little Women, December 13, which is on December 13th at 6:00 PM at the Deb Fennel Auditorium. And then that's pretty much it for Tiger.
Very good. Thank you so much. Those were great updates. And now we'll move to superintendent.
Good evening, everybody, and I want to say welcome to our guests that are here today. I'm from TTEA. Thank you for attending today, so we see you. And I'm going to move on to our updates. So first, I want to kind of give you a precursor to Alex's, our interim director, Paloski. Thank you. His in-district transfer, our open enrollment presentation today. And in advance of that, what I want to share is that we've been looking at enrollment, and right now our enrollment looks down a little bit. We're at about 11,65. And so we're down from last year. And for context, we were at about 11,656 and in about in 2019, and then we're down from 12,680. And so our enrollment's going down, and right now it looks like, back then in 2015, we were at 12,000, we had about 700 staff members, and now we're at about 1,400 staff members. And so what we need to do, because students are how we generate revenue, is we're working with old consultants from our district management group, and we're looking at our smarter school spending. And so when we look at our strategic plan, where we'll be looking at key areas where we can get really thrifty, but also continue to make progress towards student goals. And so that stuff that we'll be bringing to you as we come back in the new year, but I just wanted to prime you for that since we'll be having those conversations with district leadership teams, with building leaders about ways that we can be a little bit, and when I say thrifty, I mean, what are ways that we can look at contracts, what are ways that we can look at the way that we're delivering a service model and just pivot, but still make sure that we are giving services to students? So that's something that we're looking at right now. Also, as we wrap up the 2024 calendar year, I wanted to spend a moment just looking at some of the bright spots. I think we heard some of those today around attendance. So we've done really good work around attendance, especially at Bridgeport. Dr. Miles mentioned Durham. In district-wide, we're look, we're improving attendance, so I want to give a shout out to all those folks. They're doing the hard work to make sure that kids are coming to school and removing barriers to get kids to school because we know that students can't learn if they're not in school. Also, there's been a couple of bright spots around behaviors, especially at the middle school level. So referrals are down. Cell phone referrals are down, too. And we know that the climate and culture data is showing that things are improving in those areas, and so that's a bright spot. And then we're continuing to focus on our commitment to inclusion and equity in our schools, and that's something that we don't want to lose sight of as we enter the 2025 calendar. And then moving forward, we are going to continue to focus on ways that we can improve experiences for students, especially when it comes to our strategic plan and being able to commit to all the things on strategic plan around achievement, around recruitment and hire, and then also around creating safe and welcoming schools to students. And so we have a board retreat coming up pretty soon, and we look forward to working with our board so we can tighten our goals with that and share it with the public as well. And then finally, what I want to share is that last week, we got to, well, I had the opportunity to visit Tiger High School, and I got to meet with a couple of student groups. And this is one of the first times that I got to just sit down with students and discuss with them what their experiences were like in school. So we talked about everything from transportation to areas of discrimination and experiences that students are having that we need to focus on and improve. But overall, what I'd like to say is that students seemed like they were having a great experience in school, felt valued and represented, and I keep looking at Maas because she was in one of those groups. And so it was just a pleasure to be able to meet with all the students who were just honest and candid about ways that we can continue to improve schools for them, and also gave us compliments on ways that we're showing up to them. So I look forward to meeting with the Tualatin High School group pretty soon here. And then the last thing I want to share is that, as I've spoke with people today, it sounds like a bug is going around, whether it's staff members, board members, or parents. So I don't know if it's Noro or something nasty out there, but please make sure that you are doing everything you can to take care of yourself, and that if you are feeling sick, to stay home because we don't want to pass bad things around, especially during the holiday season. And that is it for my updates. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, board member update? Director Weston?
I guess I'll start by saying thank you for our TTEA members and leaders who make our schools great and who advocate to improve working and learning conditions for students and teachers alike. Thank you to those of you who have been working diligently to close the bargaining gap and find a balance where neither side is fully happy, but where the contract is fair and allows for a balance of current needs and ongoing district financial stability. I know that our teachers showed up today because they care about their work, their contributions, and our young people, so thank you. I also want to say a few words for a loss in our community of Andrea, who served the Tualatin Middle School community and her family. For Andrea's family, I'm so sorry for your loss. I also want to express appreciation for the parents, community members, and district employees who worked on addressing cell phones in schools. I hope we are able to have a policy that keeps young people engaged in learning and connecting with others, but balances those needs with trust in young people, potential emergency issues, and access to devices for those with disabilities who need them for such purposes. I hope we can consider a policy that standardizes some of the additional limits on screens we've seen this year. And again, thank you to everyone that showed up today.
All right. Director Zershmid?
So I just want to remind everybody that Governor Kotek came out with her proposed budget last week, and the, her number for education of 11.3 billion is certainly better than we've ever seen before, and that's something to be celebrated. However, we still need to make sure that the legislature passes it at that level or higher, at that 11.3 number. It just about covers the bump in our PERS increase over the next two years. And so for us to have meaningful additions or even meaningful sustainability of our budget, something better than that 11.3 number would be best. So I encourage everybody to gear up, to be talking to their legislators, to make sure that- to make sure that that final budget for education is more than that. I also wanted to point out that while the overall state budget that she has proposed is up thirteen percent, the number for education is up just over ten percent. So once again, education will be taking a cut as a percentage of the state budget, which I think is not right.
I'll be brief, um, mostly because I'm one of the people that got whatever it is that's running around. Um, I did want to mention that last week was the COSA Law Conference. Um, and so there were some really great, uh, sessions, um, that had to do with not only board work, but admin work, a lot of, there was just a lot of really good information. Um, so in the coming weeks, we may share some of what we learned or what I learned, um, around that. I know Director Miles was there, our superintendent was there. Um, and so there was, there's some good opportunities to kind of see how, um, kind of the state can align and also advocate for a lot of the things that I think we collectively want, um, at the state level. Um, and so that was one of the big pieces is legislative advocacy, and I know Director Zerschme has worked with parents and, um, there'll be some legislative, uh, roadshow sort of open house things, um, for Washington County that will be through OSBA in January, and so, um, I'll be announcing more information about that, but really just how do we sort of band together so that we can do, um, what we can and also what is best for our teachers and our students and our community. Um, and I wanted to also echo what Director Weston said about the, the absolute tragic loss um, that Tuolumne and our, our community as a Tuolumne parent, um, suffered over the Thanksgiving weekend. Um, and I know there's been an outpouring of support by both the Byram and the Tuolumne communities, and so that's been really beautiful to see. Um, with that, we will move to public comment. Um, and so we haven't actually had much of this this year, so I'm gonna go ahead and read. And those of you that are familiar, this is the same as it's been in past years, but I'm gonna go ahead and read just sort of the, um, the process for public comment. Um, and then we will get started. After being recognized by the board chair, you will identify yourself with your full name and zip code of residence. Public comments are shared with the board during public comment portions of the meeting and are limited to three minutes, which will be put up on the screen for you there. Uh, comments should be brief and concise, and then just know that the time will start once you've provided your name and zip code. Uh, a group of visitors with a common purpose should designate a spokesperson for the group. You may also submit written public comment, which will be read by the board and become part of the public record, including the meeting minutes, but it will not be read aloud at the meeting. Speakers may offer objective criticism of school operations and programs. The board will not hear comments regarding any individual, district staff member, or person connected with the school system. If the current public comment agenda ex- item exceeds thirty minutes, the period may be extended at the discretion of the chair to ensure all TTSD students and parents are heard. Uh, board members, and so this is just sort of, I think, a helpful one to remember. Board members don't respond to public comments, so, um, and that's just sort of how public comment works. So if we look stoic and we're not responding, that's because we are really here to just listen to what you have to say, um, not because we don't necessarily want to respond or don't have a response. Um, but this is really a time for members of the public to express their views. TTSD is no place for bias or hate. There will not be profanity or language that minimizes or causes harm to anyone else's identity per policy ACC. If such language occurs, the speaker will forfeit the remainder of their time and be removed from the meeting. So with that, let me grab my roster. Uh, is Lindsay Voorhees here? Perfect, come on up. And again, um, on the microphone, just push the button to the touchscreen, and then, um, name and zip code, and then your time will start.
Good evening, Dr. Ruto and board chair and fellow board members. Appreciate this opportunity. My name is Lindsay Voorhees, zip code nine seven two two four. I have two children currently in our elementary schools, and I'm here today to speak to the topic of the current smartphone policy. As a concerned parent, I believe that the current policy is insufficient to keep our students safe once they reach high school. I've also seen that the policy in elementary and middle schools is not being consistently enforced as it's currently written. And I do believe a timely revision is necessary and critical for the well-being and academic progress of our children. Couple weeks ago, my son, who's in first grade, got off the bus and said, hey, mom, guess what my friend showed me? And went on to explain the content that was showed to him from a fifth grader who had the smartphone on the bus and had shown inappropriate content. Back to, um, more formal research. We now have access to the research and it's quite clear. Smartphone devices with access to the web, a wide array of social media, gaming apps that can't easily be controlled even at the router level provide access to inappropriate and unsafe content. They also serve as conduits to propel bullying. We've seen that happen here in this district. To access drugs that are being sent directly to children's homes and to platforms where predatory victimization is prolific. Smartphones inhibit impersonal, so in-person social development as well. During these informal passing times where peers have opportunities to interact with one another face to face with their staff members who are there to support them or instead head down with their phones. You see this at lunch, passing periods, et cetera. Smartphones are the only device I'm speaking about tonight. There are many other options. You mentioned board member, um, Ms. Weston around the need for students who have special needs to have access. We have other devices available for that. This is specific to smartphones where you cannot lock down effectively access inappropriate content or materials. And given access to those things in an unsupervised setting is not okay with me and I don't want my children exposed to other children's smartphones who have inappropriate content at the ready. TTSD should take a proactive and progressive stance on this policy as neighboring districts have. We now know, we have the research, our job is to shape the future of citizens in our community and leaders. And it's vital to ensure that every student has the chance to thrive in a safe and focused learning environment. I urge the board to consider adopting a full ban on smartphones only, K-12. Full smartphone bans are supported by research as the only effective way that we have right now. And we can do this without spending tons of money on those magnetic locking pouches. I'm happy to share ideas later. So thank you for your consideration and I appreciate the time tonight.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have Kristy Baker.
Hi, I'm Kristy Baker. I'm a parent and also a child advocate for our students in TTSD. Our district smartphone policy is needing to take a stronger action to keep our kids safe and focused in classrooms, which also will reduce peer pressure for our kids to have a healthier environment in our schools. And I'm here to tell you what kind of damage cell phones can cause and how it affects our students and teachers. Even though we're currently not allowed to have them out during class, this rule does not stop students from recording other videos of students in PE class. This one happened in, in a PE class during the last two months in one of our junior high schools. There are two, two sixth graders in one of our junior high schools. One of the, one of them is an autistic child who can't, um, walk, run, or talk like most of the other kids. And one of the other students actually recorded three different videos that was meant to humiliate him and tease and, and make other kids laugh at him. And he posted it on social media, um, during these last, last five weeks. And, uh, he would also during the, in class, in the math class, he would share them with all the other kids. And basically, this caused him so much stress and humiliation and trauma that the parents had to remove him from school and put him in on-home, virtual online because he couldn't go back to school after what happened to him. And also to the disruptions in class, the teacher couldn't do anything that she needed to do to teach the kids during that time. And she spent most of the time trying to break down those disruptions. When we, actually, any of us went to school, we didn't have smartphones to deal with. We didn't have any of these kind of disruptions. We were able to focus in class and having them there, it actually causes a lot of just inability to be able to, for their teachers to be able to do what they have to, to do their jobs. Just help us make the needed changes for our kids, for our teachers and other staff that have to deal with this use of cell phones in school. Let's make the change for the better to give our children the school life that we were able to grow up with. Let's help make a change. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, next I have Brooke Diaz.
Good evening. My name is Brooke Diaz. Uh, my zip code is nine seven two two three. And I am the parent of a student here at TTSD. I'm here to express my concern about the district's smartphone policy and its current enforcement. While smartphones have revolutionized our life, the data paints a very grim picture for our children for which corresponding rates of depression, anxiety, and suicide have skyrocketed. A recent study by the University of Michigan and Common Sense Media uncovered some stark realities of smartphone use among children and adolescents both in and out of schools. I've provided that study in full to our work group and committee. I believe the data supports a bell-to-bell ban and better enforcement for the following reasons. First, the constant distraction. The most used apps on our children's smartphones are designed to compel ongoing use as the algorithms adapt to the moods of the user and deliver ever more engaging content. Student participants in the Common Sense Media Study received a median of two hundred and thirty-seven notifications in a day. And kids over thirteen were most likely to check their phone over a hundred times a day. Allowing smartphones to remain in our schools builds an environment where children's attention is fragmented, leaving less capacity for focus and learning. Secondly, safety. Social media and messaging apps can be, can fuel bullying and expose students to harmful content. The ability to take photos and videos of other students at school to share on the open internet is one of many safety concerns. Sixty-eight percent of children in the study used social media apps. Any guesses on how many used apps with mature ratings? Including Pornhub, fantasy sports, betting apps, and others featuring real and simulated violence and sex? Forty-five percent. That's almost half. Allowing any student access to smartphones during school hours is allowing this content in our schools. Finally, social and emotional development. By underenforcing responsible policy, we are robbing our children of the opportunity to fill time between class, building organic peer-to-peer connections fundamental to pro-social behavior, healthy relationships, and mental and emotional well-being throughout their lives. In addition to a bell-to-bell ban, substantial di- uh, district-level enforcement is key to ensuring our students and teachers are supported. This doesn't need to be an expensive proposition. Together, let's secure a healthy, smartphone-free learning environment for our TTSD students. I also want to, um, show my full support for our amazing educators who deserve a fair contract. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Sarah Darling?
Hello. I am Sarah Darling and my zip code's nine seven two two three. Uh, good evening. I have two children who graduated from TTSD schools, two children currently attending a school in the district, and I volunteered at a TTS school once a week for the last three years. I'm here today to advocate for three things: stronger cellphone restrictions, purposeful technology use, and robust tech education in our school district. Research on youth and smartphones is abundant and clear. Smartphone devices with applications and internet access provide easy access to unsafe content and experiences. They're conduits to bullying, drugs, and inappropriate content that their brains cannot process. At the last board meeting, there was some discussion amongst the board on why students might need or want phones, and I believe all were reasons of convenience that could be addressed through other means. I'm also here today to speak in favor of personal, or, uh, purposeful technology use in class. Let's be honest, our kids are data sources for the for-profit curriculum and app developers. I'd like renewed scrutiny of what devices and applications our kids are using, when they're using it, and why. iPad time shouldn't be an incentive if they get their work done, and it shouldn't be used for indoor recess activities. Many of the learning apps are training our kids' brains to seek dopamine rather than learn a concept. Finally, I want to advocate for robust technology education. Kids need to learn how and why to use technology. Most free apps and many free, and many paid apps are predatory, predatory, you're the product. So let's teach them how to think critically about what they get from using an app on an device. To date, I think my elementary kids have mostly learned how to tap on an iPad. They don't know how to type, they don't know how an app works, what happens behind the scenes. Without doing this work early and often, even in elementary, we're not empowering a generation, we're creating a generational problem. In closing, I ask the board to consider a full ban on phones in schools and on, and on buses, the enactment of only purposeful technology use in class, and the implementation of robust tech education for K through twelve. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And finally, Marsha Chapman.
Marsha Chapman, zip code nine seven two two three. Good evening, Board Chair Irvin, Vice Chair Jaimez, and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I was pleased to see so much support for our teachers. I reviewed what information was available regarding their requests from the Teachers Union, and I am in complete support of their requests. Our teachers deserve more pay. Our students and our teachers deserve smaller classes and a longer school year. I am grateful that the union and our community are advocating for these changes. I also believe that everyone in this room would prefer to give our teachers what they are asking for. But I have been a witness in the past few years to the challenges the district faces regarding budgets. Every budget session is a struggle to retain the programs that are helping all of our students while also responding to unfunded mandates from the legislature. All this is done while not being funded at the basic levels needed to provide our children with best-in-class education. I encourage everyone to watch Director C's financial presentation from the October fourteenth board meeting for more context. I trust that the parties in the negotiations for a new contract will approach these negotiations with confidence and with a willingness to listen. I have seen places identified for possible cuts to support teachers' requests. The district can better answer if those cuts would work than I can. However, these seem to be, to me, to be just nibbles around the edge of the budget and do not solve the core problem. For all the supporters of our teachers and of our education system, I encourage you to take the energy with which you support the Teachers Union today to the legislative session next spring. We need our legislators to hear our voices in support of the schools and the teachers. We also need to take our advocacy to our communities. The education of the next generation is all of our responsibility. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. And that concludes our public comments for this evening. So we will move to our first report and discussion item, oh, which is me. We will be reporting on our SIP presentations that we have with the various schools. So I think last time it was about three minutes. Um, would anyone like to go first? Do I have to volunteer someone?
Last time I took more than three minutes, so I'll try and keep it as brief as possible. Uh, I had the pleasure of sitting down with, uh, the principal at Deer Creek and we talked about several things that they are doing there to educate our students with a main focus on, um, obviously, reading, math, um, and they also talked about, um, attendance, as we saw with Bridgeport. And one of the things that they're, that they're doing there is, uh, the same thing that Durham Elementary was doing with that targeted, um, implementation of Ignite tutoring, where they get one-on-one tutoring. with a person on the other side of the screen. And they are doing it for second grade currently. They want to expand it for second and third grade. But they are focusing on reading fluency with the Science of Reading curriculum that Ignite tutoring uses. And as you know from previous years, we've talked about how tutoring provides one of the best support or effect sizes so that we can create better outcomes for our students. They're also focusing on pushing into the classroom for ELD support and making sure that there is that allotted thirty-minute chunk for all of our multilingual learners. Then with, with math, they're using some of the funds that are being given by the foundation to have those math interventions that we normally don't see within our classrooms, but they're using those funds to hire extra people and bring them in so that they can do the math intervention support. And within attendance, they've seen that with their kindergartners, they, they're focusing on kindergarten and they've seen an increase in their attendance as well as having an intentional focus within their native Hawaiian Pacific islander students, which, as we know, have a higher absenteeism rate, unfortunately, and so they're doing that, you know, increasing their interventions to have more, you know, more, more prices as well as other, other attendance supports so that they can bring in or have the students come in and be welcome into their school. And then one of the connections that, or one of the things that they were talking about as well is they do some of the in-print lessons as well as being an upstand, upstander in teaching versus bullying lessons that are implemented in their each plan so that they have that accountability for, for students and decreasing that anti-racist, or that anti-bias in increasing the anti-racist education in our schools.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Director Weston?
Yeah, thank you. So I was able to connect with Alberta Ryder and hear about what's going on at in their school. We talked about attendance, particularly for kindergartners, and it sounded like that was doing better over time and that it's not as much due to illness like we've seen in the last couple of years where kids were kind of rebuilding their immune systems and there was a lot of fear of illness. But now there's a little bit more challenge about families going on trips and maybe not prioritizing school attendance as much, and so they're looking at connecting with families to make sure families are thinking about the priority of good attendance. We also talked about if, if, for example, winter break was longer and the school year was longer because some families are taking a lot of trips, especially people with connections internationally are taking some family trips, and that's having a bit of an impact also. We also talked about the office referral rate is particularly high for students with disabilities and what that's kind of coming from, what supports are being offered to make sure those students are successful, and, and also a little bit about if the setting is, is working for some of those students, and also some success stories that they'd experienced. So overall, really helpful and a great presentation.
That's awesome. Thank you.
I met with Rory Moore from Templeton Elementary in Kalabuya. A couple of things that he spoke of that I'd like to highlight. They are now using an SEL screener tool that tracks each student in each class, class by class, so the teacher can look to see which students in their class are on task seventy, eighty or percent of the time or less, and then also provides tools to help each individual child with whatever they need to help them get on task, which I thought was a really nice thing. I'm not describing it very well, but it's a very cool app. One of the things that Templeton is doing that other schools, I think in our district, are not doing as much is they have a dedicated thirty-minute daily writing block in addition to their ninety-minute reading block. Principal Moore suggested that when we look at our next ELA curriculum, we look for one that's not just reading, but also has that writing component because there's a lack of that district-wide. And having been a writer, writing teacher myself, I totally empathize with the idea that writing is a really important way to learn. One of the interesting, good thing, bad thing. The new iReady math curriculum is much more rigorous than our old expressions was. At Templeton, the teachers have really embraced the iReady and are going with it and love it. But one of the problems with it is that for the students who are in particular in the higher grades, fourth and fifth, who had their initial math with expressions, they're having a hard time getting up to speed because it is that much more rigorous. When the kinders and firsts who have had it from the get-go move on up, they won't have the same problem. But for now, those fourth and fifth grade students and teachers are really struggling to get it, to find the holes and fill them for those kids. There's an element of that also where they're probably, the fact that they're COVID kids has something to do with, with those gaps as well. And then finally, one thing, sort of a fault in my curiosities category, mentioned that the Swiss data that we are using for behavior referrals, the ethnicities attached to students wasn't accurate for his school. He found a number of inaccuracies, and there's something in the way that this Swiss database was pulling data from, I'm not sure which one it was, but, anyway. Yeah, some sort of a mistake.
It was probably government data, which sometimes inaccurately
Right.
identify students sometimes because it makes them choose one.
Right.
Or sometimes, there's, there's a couple of issues that the state is working through on.
Right. But what it means for Templeton is that their initial data for some of their students is going to be inaccurate because the students were misidentified. So the sort of the grain of salt as we're looking at data over time in the district is to keep that in their back of their minds that there may be some inaccuracies there.
Thank you so much. Director Miles?
So I had the privilege of sitting with Principal Hedges from Durham, and we talked about sort of three big areas. In language arts, they are really focusing on the co-teaching model, especially for multilingual learners, and I asked, you know, what does this look like? And she described that one teacher does the content and the other teacher does the language structure and that the data is really promising already. They're also working on small group and partnering practices. In math, for their iReady implementation, they, they are doing this thing where their teachers are working with students on introducing the problems before they're even talking about numbers. So they're talking about how to solve a problem before they're even introducing numbers. That sounded like a lot of fun. Doing a lot of instructional coaching in math and a lot of their PD is aligned to iReady, and they, they focus on this in every staff meeting. The biggest thing that was, or at least most impactful to me, was talking about the school culture and climate and their focus on school culture and climate. They are having a lot of community events and listening sessions, doing surveys for families and students and staff. They have monthly PBIS assemblies. They've had quite a bit of turnover and new staff. In fact, all of their tier-two and tier-three teams are brand-new. They're really working on developing efficacy in all tiers, but especially tier-one. The big aha for me, when we did the aha moment, was their attendance, attendance focus. And most, if not all, I can't remember, maybe it was all, but, but many of the grades are over ninety percent attendance right now. And, and that's huge growth. They are having fun with this by doing challenges by grade and really trying to gamify being at school. And staff adopt families, they make calls, they do home visits, but we talked about what is driving this. And as we talked about a little bit earlier, she really talked about people wanting to be at school and really creating an environment where people are having fun. They take care of each other, they want to be together, and just really creating an environment where, where students, families, and staff want to be there. She talked about her themes this year really being transparency, positivity, being visible in school, and appreciation of staff. She runs a coffee cart around school, giving coffee to staff, which is enormously popular. Staff do toodles for each other and put them on the wall. And, and then, just as I did with Mary Woodward last time we did this, I asked her, what is the most exciting thing? What, what is she looking forward to the most? And she said that there was really a need for a lot of healing in that school, and, and so she, again, is just really focusing on creating a place where people want to be and that that has been really successful and that they are having a lot of fun and really enjoying being together. And, and it's a great place to come.
Love that. All right. So I sat with Principal Cosmala for Tuolde Middle School. And I mean, I think the first, there's a lot of really, really cool things happening, and also it's a really, really hard time for them right now, and so just kind of honoring both of those things at the same time. And so one of the things that they're really digging into and really leaning into is not just math, but really our multilanguage learners. And really, really trying to drill down into where that disparity is really happening and how do we kind of, what, what do we need to fix as educators to kind of help build that back up? And so they have done a lot. They're working with the Teacher Development Group and really kind of reteaching how to teach math. And so they have this, you know, we've talked about the Coalition of the Willing, some teachers that are really excited to like take a year and do this PD and kind of be in this cohort of relearning how to teach math in a way that talks, has a lot of opportunities to respond. There's a lot of engagement. There's a lot of working through problems in a way that's not just, this is an algorithm and this is a right and a wrong answer, but really understanding the whys, kind of like I talked about with, with our group last time. And so that's been really, really exciting, and teachers are, they're kind of digging into that own grit mindset of like, we're going to keep at this and we're going to do it, and they're really starting to see some positive results in that. And they also got a grant with AmeriCorps, so that person is working with forty students during the day, and so about four kids at a time they're pulling out because really recognizing that those kiddos that have more significant gaps in skill mastery, just, they just need their own sort of space and time to kind of pick up those skills and then, so that they can continue to see those growth markers, and so they're doing that. She also has people meeting in PLCs, and it's been a really positive, fun experience. I know. Every educator's like, I'm sorry, what? And they're meeting in vertical teams in content areas and really just kind of talking about strategies, what's working, effective discourse strategies, all of that stuff. And so one thing that we talked about at the end, Director Bernard and Director Fields were with me, but really this idea of, there's a lot of opportunities for teachers to sort of try on the moves and the things that they, that admin, that Susan is asking them to do, and just kind of like see how they fit, see how they work, and see how it works with their kiddos in their class. And so there's a lot of freedom and sort of reignition, I think, of some like teaching passions in there because it's really just some new, very engaging strategies that they're using. So it was very exciting. That's all I have. So thanks, all of us, for doing that. Okay. Moving on, we have our first quarter enrollment updates with Interim Director of Communications, Polaski.
Well done.
Thank you.
Hello again. This report allows us to keep tabs on transfers as they relate to total enrollment. And Elisa Burton, our manager of community relations, is going to go into some of the numbers and be glad to answer any questions that you have.
No slides? Did you get that? Sorry for the delay. Did you receive it in your packet, the link to it, to the slides? I apologize. Okay, sorry about that. Okay, so we're going to, yeah, go through the slides. For the transfers, the first slide in our inter-district, is our inter-district transfer summary. And so, as you know, every year, the school board approves so many slots going out, and then we have unlimited opportunities for students coming into TTSD with approval of our administrators. And so, as you can see, our incoming students currently for this year is fifty-three, and twenty-four of those are continuing and sibling, twenty-nine total new students. And then we've had three hardships to date that have been approved through our assistant superintendent. For outgoing, we have our twenty board-approved slots that are, of, of students that can be released to attend other school districts. And so this year, it is actually a total of fifty-nine because that includes continuing students and siblings, with a total of really twenty-eight new students and their siblings. So it's twenty family slots, the easier way to, to understand. And then, just coincidentally, three hardship releases. And then there's a link to the full detailed transfer report, which includes all the numbers for the schools if you want additional information. Are there any questions about this data? Okay, so next slide, please. So our in-district transfer process is transfers within the school district between, between schools. So we have our total enrollment for this year. As Dr. Rudo referenced earlier in the meeting, we are down in enrollment compared to last year. And so, but this is in-district transfer, so these are students staying within our district. But we have seven hundred and fifty-four total for this year that have transferred, you know, to other schools within the district. And then you can find the full details of which schools that involves in that additional report linked in there. Any questions about this data? Next slide.
I'm curious about the increase in the overall number of students that's going up. Is that because as we're losing enrollment, there's more room in schools for kids to move around? Is that why we're seeing more in-district transfers or what's?
Yeah, most likely. Principals, you know, probably see more space in classes, and so they, they agree to, it just, it really depends on, on capacity and then kind of what, what the makeup of the classes are.
Does that number this year count the sort of grandfathered numbers we did for letting kids stay at Durham?
Yeah.
Or, or then if they were going to Tuolde, not to have to switch over if they had a, okay.
Yeah.
So within that is those sort of pre-known, okay.
Yeah, and the next slide, we went ahead and included the rising fifth grade and legacy Tuolde numbers for Durham. Really, Bridgeport, current Bridgeport boundary, so is, you know, we did a boundary adjustment for Durham Elementary last year and moved an area of that boundary to Bridgeport, and now that boundary to Bridgeport, and now Hazelbrook instead of Tuolity. But we did allow for our rising fifth graders and Tuolity enrolled students, and then, and students continuing are part of those rising, are the same family of students attending Tuolity to finish out their middle school years at Tuolity. But then they would transition their, into their regular feeder pattern, which is Tiger, or Walton High School. And these are the numbers, the current numbers. So we had two students who chose to stay in fifth grade. The rest went on to Bridgeport. And then we'll, we'll continue on to Hazelbrook next year. Any questions?
Thank you for the information. I just want to say that I think it's important that our district be the kind of place where people want to be, that the people are excited and feel like it's the perfect place for their kids. And I think that's true for a lot of people. But I, I'm disappointed that it's not true for more. And so, and that's not to say, I mean, we have a lot of really great things happening in programs and schools and teachers, but I am concerned seeing the direction of some of these numbers, and I'm wondering if there's any information about kind of the age, any particular schools, based on kind of some of the boundaries and that kind of thing, or any input from family, like any, because I think, to some extent, the regional schools are kind of competing for students. So I think...
Yeah, we all have, all districts, surrounding districts have open enrollment. And in the next slide, we do give numbers for our charter and online school enrollment. The numbers have gone up for homeschool students as well, but you can see that they've gone up a little bit, not much, but for virtual and charter schools. We are doing a better job, just a note, in trying to, you know, make sure we're sharing information about TTVA with families that are looking for an online option for their student. But we do, and one thing about the homeschool numbers is, currently, Northwest ESD doesn't track when students return to a district, and so we don't know that number, you know, will fluctuate throughout the year. But, yes. Any other thoughts or questions?
I can also chime in from my personal experience. So Director Weston, you probably know there's a fairly large housing development going in the south end of Tuolotin, the Salt Creek area. And those houses are all, those students in those houses are all going to Sherwood, and I know of many, many families in that area that would love to be going to Tyro-Tuolotin schools, but they can't because Sherwood won't release them. So it's not that we're not doing a good job of offering good stuff for kids, it's, in many cases, it's that our neighboring districts, as staff have pointed out, neighboring districts are also hurting for students, and so they won't release them to us, even when they are literally a block and a half away from our schools.
I do have an update on that, though. With the newest superintendent there, I had a conversation with him late summer, and explained the hardship that that would have on families, if there's a school that's within walking distance from Sherwood to Tuolity, or sorry, Tuolotin. And it would be hard to be a walking distance from Sherwood to Tuolity, by the way, I just wanted to own that. To that end, they did agree to release students if they want to apply for an interdistrict transfer. So I just, the community knows that, we need to start sharing that with the community. And he was very, he was very thoughtful in wanting to help with that, so I do appreciate that from them.
Director Mills?
Just about the online enrollment, I see as creeping ever so slightly toward that 3% number. Districts have the option of not saying no at 3%. Would we say no at 3% to releasing students?
I guess this is a conversation we have to have, but at this point, our policy is 3%, so we would probably hold fast there. Now, it's not something that I know of, and someone can direct me, or correct me, but we haven't bumped into it yet.
Yeah, and this is approved charter and online schools. And we've seen one thing that might be contributing to loss of enrollment, is we've seen an uptick of students enrolling in non-approved online, and they leave on their own and go, because we have limited release slots. But, and interestingly enough, one in Utah, an online school in Utah. So, yeah, just there's more options out there for families.
In general, the vast, or the primary reason for a drop in enrollment by 1,610 years, some of it has to do with families making different choices, but for the most part, it's different trends in birth rates, in jobs, in the economy, in housing affordability, and all those things have a synergistic effect that have been impacting our enrollment throughout the state. And I believe in about 2028 is when we're going to start to see a shift in that. So we'll see things kind of bottom out, and then we'll see our enrollment start to rise, just based on those variances. Now, with this data, in terms of open enrollment, and families wanting to go to charter schools, or whatever it might be, these are opportunities for learning for us. We can ask some hard questions and do some inquiry and a problem of practice on what is it that's intriguing families to go towards a homeschool versus online academy versus a charter, and then we can determine if we have the resources to fill those gaps. And so we can, we definitely have a lot of learning to do from this as well.
All right, and that's our last slide. One more slide, just the transfers proposal for next year. We'll have that ready to go in February, and, yeah, and have an update on data at that time.
Want to say thank you very much to our communications team for putting this together.
Thank you. All right, and with that, we have our group or the cell phone work group recommendations. For an update.
There we go. Good evening. Thank you for your time. We're looking forward to sharing our recommendations with you and answering any questions the board might have. So let's go ahead and get started with the next slide. Oh, my bad, I'm going too fast, sorry. My name is Roy Moore, I'm the principal at Sevilledon, California, and I'll start with...
Eric Nessie, I'm a special projects administrator, work part-time, and help to facilitate the group.
Hello, I'm Marnie Watts-Tupo, Associate Principal at Fowler Middle School.
Hi, I'm Jonathan Holm, I'm the Dean of Steens at Tygerd High School.
Just very eager to share this information with you guys. All right, so our agenda tonight is pretty simple. We're going to start reviewing the initial recommendations that we shared with you all on October 28th. We're also going to share some survey highlights that generated the greatest amount of conversation among our cell phone work group when we reviewed the results. And then lastly, we're going to share our final recommendations and have some time for any questions that you might all have. Next slide, next slide, please. All right, so this is just a reminder, these are our initial recommendations that we proposed five weeks ago on 10/28. And all the recommendations on this list currently have action items that are in process. The last of the initial recommendations was regarding a survey that was offered to students, staff, and families. Your board packet included the full set of survey results, and then I will highlight some of the data points that stood out to the work group as we reviewed them. Next slide, please. So the optional survey for students, staff, and families was open during the last week of October and the first week of November. These six questions were posed to all three groups, and in our final report, which as I mentioned, was part of your board packet, all the disaggregated data has been graphed. While the survey is short, like you can see just six questions, we thought it was most relevant to review the responses from each group individually, so it's really like, three distinct surveys. Also noteworthy, questions two through four allow respondents to select multiple responses, so as such, you will see the responses for those questions, that they do not necessarily add up to 100%. Next slide, please. Okay. The work group felt the question that most comprehensively and succinctly captured the general feeling, feelings was the question, what is your satisfaction with TTSD's current policy on student cellphone usage in schools? And just a note, for the sake of simplicity, the extreme and somewhat, as they apply to both satisfied and dissatisfied responses, were combined on the right side of the slide that you can see there. For students, the work group was not surprised to see that 52% were dissatisfied with the policy. For staff, you can see that 59% are at least somewhat satisfied with the policy versus 13.5% of staff that have some level of dissatisfaction. We interpret this as an indicator that our policy is helping curb cellphone distractions. For guardians and parents, we concluded that 18% of those who were dissatisfied likely believe a full ban at the high school, likely believe in a full ban at the high school, which would involve removing access at lunch and at passing times. Next slide, please. The final question allowed for an open-ended or narrative response. We use ChatGPT to organize this qualitative data. This produced three prevailing themes that are important for us to understand and recognize in both our actions and our communications moving forward. First, students express frustration over a so-called one-size-fits-all policy, especially for those students who feel like they are using technology responsibly. Second, distractions to the learning environment are a concern in more than just one group, but based on what we saw in the survey, staff were the most concerned about this. And then finally, parents wanted their students to have access to their phones for a host of safety concerns that are detailed in that final bullet point, from emergencies to just logistical changes over the course of the day. Next slide, please. So, as a result of our committee's work, which includes the necessary and helpful feedback from our community, we've put forth these final recommendations. In line with our initial recommendation, we believe that continued implementation of our current policy makes the most sense. We essentially have a cellphone ban in grades K through eight. Students have their phone, can have their phones, but only if they're off and away. If they're not, phones can be confiscated. At the high school level, phones are not allowed in class, but they can be used during lunch and at passing times. Our policy includes intentional, age-appropriate flexibility. In making this decision, we acknowledge the valuable feedback from public comment tonight, and respect the social, that social media has, excuse me, and respect the impact social media has on adolescents. The research around this is something our work group reviewed and discussed at length. Ultimately, we believe our policy is best for TTSD at this time. But with that said, district cellphone policy will be part of our Student Rights and Responsibility Handbook, and there's already established process to review this document and to make changes. This is done on an annual basis, and this year's work starts this spring. Moving forward with our current policy does not lock us into anything if changes need to be made. In continuing with our recommendations, we also need to standardize our data collection systems across our schools to obtain meaningful information that will allow us to holistically, to make holistic system shifts or simple refinements as needed, as well as finding targeted areas for improvement and support. Next, we'll be sharing the survey results with the Technology Committee that is creating the K-12 Digital Citizenship Lessons, so they can incorporate the findings as they adjust and add to its scope and sequence. We continue to recommend strengthening pro-social and school connection opportunities for all students. We want our students to feel a greater connection to our community by increasing opportunities with peers and teachers. This will help ensure we're creating a sense of belonging and reducing the need for students to give so much attention to their devices. Next, we want to share the survey results with our broader community. We need to ensure we're communicating effectively around our cellphone policy, so that everyone is aware of our practices and the logic behind them. We believe not only will this make our practices more effective, but also garner a higher level of support from our families. And then lastly, we want to communicate with TTSD's safety and security staff to bring these topics into our upcoming Safety Summit meetings. Our parents have made it very clear that they are thinking a lot about safety, which is, of course, understandable, and clearly we'll do everything possible to protect all of our students, but we also want our families to be confident in everything that we're doing in TTSD. That is essentially our final recommendations, and we have some time for questions.
Questions? Oh, Director Mills?
So thank you for this. A few things that I really want to appreciate is the fact that you are considering the research while, well, engaging with staff, families, and students in this, still considering the research, but making nuanced and not one-size-fits-all recommendations, like some of our neighboring districts have, and taking a grade-level approach to the recommendation, just based on what you gathered, keeping the recommendation the way it is right now, to me, sounds like the right thing, but I, I know that, you know, some of our neighboring districts have been like, off and away for everybody. And I appreciate the work that this group is doing to say, maybe it needs to be more nuanced than that, so thank you.
I just wanted to double-check, because you didn't touch on it this evening. Our current policy for cell phones allows students who need their cell phones for medical reasons or for IEPs or 504s, that continues.
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
And we're required to do that, or there's, if it's in their 504 or IEP, then we're required by law to abide by that, if it includes incorporating a cellphone.
Director Weston?
So thank you for doing this work. Looking at the data, it looked like to me that there was more concern in middle school around cellphone use. And I think, having a kid in each level of elementary, middle, and high school, to me, I feel like the younger kids are less likely to have one at all. And if they have one, it's probably like, old, or it's in their backpack, and they're not necessarily using it the whole time. And then some of the high school students are more conscientious about it. But I feel like middle school can be a real sweet spot, where it's like, potentially more of a challenge. And so, looking at our current policy, it says, pre-K through eight, they're supposed to be powered off and away the whole day, so that includes passing periods. But I think for a lot of young people, that's not what's happening. And, or maybe it is, but I think it maybe varies. And I, so I wanted to bring that up, that I think there's a little bit more of a challenge, particularly for middle school. And then I know we have a policy, but I've seen a lot of variation in implementation of that policy. This year, for example, I've seen a much more strict, on-the-ground situation compared to prior years. And so what concerns me is that if there's that much variation in implementation, then I'm concerned that maybe the policy isn't strong enough, because, you know, if it's working, if we can, if there's that much variability in how it can be implemented, maybe it's not specific enough to get the job done. And then, because, and I think part of this is around what happens when a student does use it, if that's consistent, if that's the same between schools, between teachers, between grades. I just, I'm not sure we have it as tight as maybe it needs to be, just because of that variation. And I, I think it's important to have some nuance. For example, I know one kid has it with a diabetes monitor, like, that's obviously different. But especially around middle school, I'm not sure it's quite there. But, but especially around middle school, I'm not sure it's, it's quite there.
I can speak to what's happening at Fowler, and I've worked closely with Hazelbrook and Quality throughout this process, and also we are calibrating pretty consistently. I think with any policy, it takes calibration, and it does take time for it to, to be consistent and go into, you know, 100% implementation. I can speak at Fowler, I think our staff is doing a really good job of following the policy, we're reminding them, we're sharing the policy with our parent community, and also reminding and reviewing expectations with our students. And I would say, for the most part, it is going very well. We do track when cellphones are confiscated. It's tracked in the office, a first offense, a second offense, and then what happens on the third offense. And we have less than 1% of our students that have, that have had a, a third offense. So I, I would say overall this year, it's been going very well. This is our second year with this policy. And my colleagues at Quality and Hazelbrook have shared similar results at their schools.
First, oh, did anybody else have a comment on that? All right. Thank you for all of this work. I know this is, this was, I think I said the last time, a really heavy lift to do all this in the survey and, and really just being really thoughtful. And I know Director Weston and Miles said the same thing around just the, there is like a really nuanced approach to this and recognizing that K-5 is very different than middle and high school. And I will say, and that consistency and fidelity piece is tricky because we're humans and it's really hard to 100% get everyone to be doing something 100% the same way. But I think from last year to this year, I'm seeing progress. And I think, and you know, I, I appreciate the parents that came and spoke about this because there are, you know, buses, for example. I mean, there are all these other places where these issues, you know, I think are sort of arising. The one thing that I would also say, in a positive note, and John might be able to speak specific numbers, but I was talking to another admin at Tiger High School who said, I mean, they were incredibly, like, nobody's in the hallways anymore between classes. I mean, it used to be like you could text and like meet up with your friends in whatever hallway. Nobody's there, behavioral things are very, very different in terms of sort of statistics there. There's just like a lot of really positive things at the high school, and I know, I'm sure Tuolumne is similar, just with number one, having these policies in place. And at the high school level, which is different than middle and, and elementary, but really them having that self-discipline and that self-awareness to know, you know, not just like I have to zip it up and it's away, so I can't do it, but really at the high school, really being able to regulate that. And I think that's been a cool, at least they were saying like a really cool thing to see, and it was like a very stark difference from last year, just the amount of, it's, it's significant, and they owed it a lot to just the cellphone piece. So that was a cool thing I just wanted to pass along, and I think sort of a testament to some of the, the work that's already gone into this.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo that, the sentiment. A lot of it, this is my fourth year at Tiger High School, and coming out of COVID, there's been a lot of changes. The hallways is a big one. When we had the conversation last spring at Tiger about what we were going to do, the one agreement was no matter what we did as a staff, we all had to agree and follow through, all ships sailing in the same direction. And that's been great this year, we've done it with great fidelity. Our principal, Ms. Baron, and our admin team has done a good job of echoing the importance of doing that just recently, in fact, to make sure that our hallways are clear. I don't have the exact numbers, but I do know they were provided by one of the associate principals to me, and I, looking at them, things like fight and physical altercations have been cut in half first quarter of this year compared to first quarter the year before. Likewise, with like drug and alcohol possession and usage. And a lot of it has to do with what you mentioned, having the students in class with their phones off in a way. It's not perfect, but we have that being the commonplace. And when you have that, the kids are not communicating, hey, let's go out of class to be on our phone, to, to rendezvous, and it's keeping the hallways clear. It's keeping a lot of the problems that we saw coming out of the classrooms, they're gone, right? And the kids are in the classrooms where they're supposed to be. I know that, I having a lot of conversations with my counterpart over at Tuolumne, so I know we're doing the similar procedures, and I hope they're having the same kind of results. I don't have their data. And then lastly, I would just point out, I think, once we have that aspect of, you know, high school to high school, and then the middle schools also communicating and having similar procedures, that the bridge between the middle school to the high school and getting those kids prepared, what that means when they come to the high school.
Anything else?
I have a couple of things I wanted to say. So first off, what I want to acknowledge is that in the summertime, we made a commitment to having a robust review of everything from how cellphones are used in schools, looking at the policy and reviewing the policy and, and getting input from educators on what's working and what's not working, getting authentic voice and having an opportunity for parents, students, staff members to weigh in in a way that felt accessible and authentic. And then trying to give the board, and then also taking into account research and, and meeting with our partners over here on numerous occasions to understand their perspective and learn more about practices and how we can improve our policy. And what our commitment was is to bring that to you all so that you all could make a decision on, on how you'd like to move forward. And so I want to say thank you to this group because it's a lot of work, and they fulfilled that commitment, and I think they exceeded expectations on what the ask was in the summertime. And I, and, and I just want to say thank you to this group because they, they really dug into it and, and gave time, and they're here tonight, and I appreciate them being here tonight and the, and the manner in which they're presenting. As far as it goes with the policy, I, I just want to mention that this, this feels like another one of those moments where public, public schools are accepting the brunt of what I think is, is an issue that goes far beyond the walls of our schools. We need to do our part, that's for sure. We definitely need to do our part, and we're committed to doing that, and we're committed to partnering with folks to, to get this right. And when you have 11,000 students and you got 1,500 staff members, there's going to be conflicting views, right? And, and our responsibility is to use all of our resources and really lean into relationships so we can get that, get it, get it right. And so I think we're on our way with that. But I also don't want to dismiss a couple of things, right? And this isn't being dismissive at all, but we have our students for six and a half hours a day, 175 to 180 days a year. So there's 17 other hours where kids are not under our watch. And there's several, like a couple hundred days where kids aren't with us, right? And I, I feel a little bit like these things are a proxy for a bigger issue, right? And because we have apps that are addictive, and we need to rely on legislation, and we need to partner with our, our communities to put tighter restrictions on apps that we know are just unfruitful for most people, especially for our students, who are often subject to, who are preyed upon to, to be using these apps, right? So I don't want to let the developers of these apps off the hook. You know, I'm not saying anyone is, but I do want to make sure that we are attending to that because I think that's the root of the issue. And then also, I know we're focusing on all the challenges that these, these devices present. But I think the way that this narrative plays out, I think it dismisses how responsible a lot of our students are. I haven't heard very much, and I, and I bet the kids that I'm looking at right now, I bet you use this to check email. Maybe if you're trying to get where you're going, you use the Maps app or whatever navigation app that you have. Use it to reference Google for several things in, in a jiffy. And use it to communicate with family, loved ones, and friends in, in a way that promotes strong relationships. And so I do want to recognize that about our kids because I think that of our 11,000 kids, we have some parents who are pretty proud about the, the citizens that they're developing. And it's on us, educators, when they're under our watch, to, to give that same care and ensure that we're doing everything within, within our locus of control to ensure that we're promoting that digital citizenship. So that's what I wanted to share. Thank you very much to everyone who's been involved in this, in this work.
Just real quick, students, did, any, not to put you on the spot, it's okay if you don't, but since this really affects you all, any thoughts? First thoughts, second thoughts? Mas?
Hi, I would say thank you for advocating and have students for not just banning it because we do need to learn how to not use it all the time. Because I know that a lot of my peers are like, well, very addicted to it. So being able to teach them that, hey, like during class, I'm not able, like, we shouldn't use it. That is a good thing because those are developing the skills as we are moving more towards a digital era now. So thank you.
First of all, I want to say thank you to the superintendent for what he said. And furthermore, I'm just gonna restate what I've said a few times, of, I feel like this is a bigger issue. And I feel like a flat-out ban is not the step that needs to be taken at this level. Because what happens when that 18-year-old turns into a 19-year-old who for the past 12 years just had this ban of like, what happens when they get into the workforce and their boss is sitting over their shoulder to tap them and say, you can't be on your phone right now? I feel like it's not setting up well for the long term.
You guys are awesome, thank you. All right, any other final thoughts, questions? All right, thank you guys so much. All right, and now we have our integrated guidance with you.
Thank you very much. So do you want to introduce yourself?
Good evening, Board. I am Carol Kinch, I'm the Director of Student Services, and I will be joining Dr. Udo in our presentation this morning and this morning. You said that, you did that, this evening in place of Dr. McCall and Dr. An.
Thank you, I'm taking full accountability. When we were preparing and I was writing our notes, I, you know, I wrote my notes word for word for the most part, and then go this way and that way, and I said, thanks for being here this morning. And she heard me say that, so it's on me. But no, we are here tonight to provide a presentation on the integrated guidance and, let me make sure this clicker is working. Did that work? Did I do that, or did Thor, Thor did that? Okay. Okay, Thor, I'll be going to you to, to change the slides. So we're here to, to present on the integrated guidance. And the integrated guidance is a conglomeration or a combination of all the, the grants that we have to fund our school, to fully fund our schools, right? So this is the SIA, EIIIS, High School Success, and CSI, TSI, and more. And we were really fortunate in 2018 when we were able to pass the SIA because, as you all know, for a very long time, we didn't have the funding to meet the needs of students. And then in 2018, we got the SIA and several other grants. And what the state did was they, they determined that there need to be a way for us to have a certain level of accountability and to have, make sure that we braided those funds in a way that was making progress towards closing academic disparities, providing high-level, high-rigor academic course for all groups, building engagement within the community, and to develop a guidance or, through an application process in which we're ensuring that we're using those funds that way and that they're all aligned with each other and not for several disparate, not for several disparate efforts. And so this is our annual report which we're required to give you. And we're going to, we're going to give you a little bit more than what is required because this might be the first time that you've had a formal report on the integrated guidance, especially for some of our students or new staff. And it's also, we can make sure we're giving a refresher for those who haven't heard about it in the last year to ensure that you're, you understand the way that these funds are working because it is a significant amount of funding. And so right here on this slide, you see a summary of all the different efforts and programs. You have High School Success, Student, the SIA, Continuous Learning, Attendance, and more. And they're all working towards the effort of those four common goals on the far right-hand side, which is well-rounded education, advancing equity, engaging community, and strengthening systems and capacity. You know the next slide? Excellent. So the state rolled it out to where we have to apply for the integrated guidance to ensure that we get our funding. And this is a very much an organized and collaborative effort that follows a cycle. And so fall of 2024, you can see that we're on the engagement cycle and going into the application effort, which we'll do towards the end of the year. What does the engagement look like? We meet with, in the, in the public and ask, and one informs the public about what the integrated guidance is, what our district's goals are. We take questions, solicit input on what's important. This is things that, these are things that we did during our community sessions this fall. But we're going to continue to, to engage not only the board, but the public as well in focusing on our focal groups who weren't able to attend or that, that might have barriers to providing input. So we're very much in the engagement phase. And then we're working with the Northwest Regional ESD on the application. And so we look at our strategic plan, our financial strategic initiatives, and then we look at our overall goals that we're trying to accomplish. And then we develop a plan that fulfills the, the guidelines of the, the integrated guidance. All right, can we go to the next slide? So integrated guidance for our district, or the, the sum of all the funding comes out to about $14.5 million. Remember, we have about $177-ish dollars for our general fund, right? So this is a significant amount of money. And again, we use it to really achieve important initiatives in our district. So you can see the general breakdown. Now, this isn't an exact, this isn't an exact number because there's some overlap with things, but this is just a snapshot for you to contextualize how the funding is used. So if you look at the, the left side of the chart with the pie, the Pac-Man, the backwards Pac-Man, you'll see that there's the SIA, and then there's all the other funds. So High School Success, Early Literacy, EIIIS. EIIIS is, should be less than 1%. We use our ION database with, with early interventions systems. And then we have our comprehensive, comprehensive school improvement and targeted school improvement, which is TSI, CSI, to elevate schools that have certain areas where the state has identified them for improvement. So, and then on the right side is all of our SIA. And our SIA, we invest in everything from community engagement, a lot of the work that our equity team does, to class sizes and making sure class sizes are low so that we have manageable caseloads. Those are just a couple of examples of how we use our, our SIA funding. But it also helps to fund a lot of our, our programs around everything from CTE to, help me out with another one, counselors, social workers, thank you very much. All right, so I just kind of described some of these things, but these are the four core elements that we are targeting with TSI, oh, sorry, with integrated guidance. So again, class sizes, making sure there's a well-rounded education where students have access for Or everything from interventions to rigorous courses like IB, STEM, CTE, AP, ensuring that we have instructional, adequate instructional time. This especially helps around some of the requirements like PE, for instance, and then health and safety. So here are some program highlights. In terms of our early literacy, we're able to, so early literacy and TWE are kind of connected. And that third grade reading is something that's really important to us. And if you go into our schools, you can see a lot of our reading programs at work. And we use a lot of our Integrated Guidance funding for that. Counseling, social workers around social, emotional health. Ninth grade on track and having teams and having everything from wheel classes and other efforts to make sure that students are staying on track, having, having a team of staff that supports students and make sure that students are engaging in school. These are all things that are done as part of our Integrated Guidance funding. And importantly, and something that we're continuing to focus on is engaging our community. That's one of the most important things we can do. It is a core area of focus for us.
So I get to share with you a couple of our successes. So when we talk about Integrated Guidance, we're talking about a lot of different things that we do in schools. And so these are just two of the highlights for this, this evening. When we do a report to ODE, we're asked, ODE gives us a list of, of 20 different areas that we're supposed to rate ourselves on low, medium, high, or firmly in place. And I, when I was sitting down with Dr. Un and talking to Director Fields, I kind of chuckled at ourselves because we always rate ourselves pretty low because we always want it to be better. We always have something more that we could do, something better. And then Dr. Un is really good at saying, well, remember where we were and let's have a moment to celebrate. So correct, coordinated efforts in collective, collective advocacy is, you know, some of the most important things we do. And that actually encompasses a lot of different things. But it's really shifting the way and tweaking the way we're using data. And you see this year that the Instructional Core Team, which is myself, Director Un and Director Fields and Director Kents, are working together to unsilo how we look at schools. And so, and we looked at the ways that we use data. And so when you saw your SIPs, you saw that the data was different than we have in the, used in the past. And really what we were trying to get to is to get school and school leaders to be able to customize their school improvement plans to the local data that they have. And we, you know, it was great because I was sitting with Alberta Ryder today and we saw how much those teams looked at their local data just specifically for them. So I wanted to give you one very operational example that we heard tonight, which was, and through some of these processes through the Integrated Guidance, is Alberta Ryder was looking at, they are a targeted support school, targeted TSI school. And the area, the population of students that they were needing improvement in was students with disabilities. So in the process of looking at their data and doing a root cause analysis, they realized that when students with disabilities, when a student is identified for special education, they're often served by the special education staff. And that staff doesn't always get the same reading instruction and training as the other, the reading group. So one of the changes that they made this year was to make sure that the special education staff got trained on the reading programs at the same level as their reading, reading staff. So that's a great example of how they use data. And, you know, there's numerous other ones. Our ninth grade success work is amazing and our graduation rates show that. And then the other piece that is continually going to be worthy of, of sharing is really we, during the time that this came about, we started our Equity and Inclusion Department. So the whole infrastructure, infrastructure that Director Un has put together with our Family Partnership Advocates, our partnerships with community organizations, and our staff. She even provides support to school staff to work, to work on the equity work and our community engagement. And I'm very proud of the community engagement that we embarked on when we started this process. There, we had twice as many voices in the room than we had historically. And we continue that tradition through that department. And there's also now embedded, we're continuing to grow our partnerships. So that Equity and Inclusion isn't something we do over here, it's something that we do together. And another example of that is I'm working with the Family Partnership Advocates on how to support families when their students are going through a reading intervention or special education process. So that's me. Next slide to myself. So of course, we celebrate, but we always have areas of improvement. And I'm not going to go through each one of these, but you can see it has a lot to do with creating welcoming spaces, equity, relationships, culturally affirming practices. And I think I say this every time, until everybody feels that they belong and they feel welcomed, we're never going to arrive. And so we continue to make that a focus for our work and a commitment. And always check ourselves on how we're doing. And we can do better. And so that's continues to be an area of growth. There is some notes on here about divesting with the budget, the way it has been. There's been parts of the SIA that we had to put into staffing instead of money for collaboration. We used to have a lot of money for collaboration and training, particularly around restorative practices and SEL. But we always believe that there's another way that we can still achieve the same outcome. So we haven't stopped working on that. And then work ahead, we were really excited about unsilowing our departments so that we are united and working with schools because their schools don't work in silos of teaching and learning and student services. And so we continue to do that work and work in partnership with our school leaders to support students. Our culturally responsive practices will forever be something we're working on. I love how we are engaging our community and making decisions. And that community is our school community, our teachers, our instructional assistants, our leaders, and also the greater community of students. Students, students, students are so important and their voices and families. So the next slide is questions. That concludes our presentation for you. Questions, comments?
I have a, a comment. Thank you for this, and all of the work that's being done in this district never ceases to amaze me. I wanted to call out because just in case members of the public haven't noticed this, maybe my fellow board members didn't read this particular part, but the, the narrative response part of the Integrated Programs Annual Report has a couple of lines in it that are some of the finest writing I've seen. And I wanted to call them out. The barriers and the, the second question asks about what is getting in our way as we're trying to do this really important work? Two sentences really struck me. "The barriers and challenges we continue to face stem from the high expectations for services without adequate funding to support general operations. While we strive to be strategic and innovative, the absence of clear and sustainable funding streams for building and maintaining the necessary infrastructures leaves us relying on fragmented solutions." And we saw that last meeting when we're talking about our diverse workforce and we're pulling together grants to get pieces together. We need a clear, sustainable funding stream to do this incredibly important work. And I appreciate that the state is trying to come up with grants to get us to do it. But what we need is a school funding system that will get us to do it all the way across without all of these silly little grant things. So whoever wrote that in our narrative response, thank you and kudos.
Dr. Moss?
My professional life, I get to work with districts on Integrated Guidance stuff all the time. And I know that when it was formed, it was meant to make everything easier, right? It's meant to bring all this stuff together and make everything easier in real life. It did not. I'm just looking at our, the slide with the backwards Pac-Man. And the, the program grants, and I'm wondering, is there space in any of these for our attendance initiatives? And where might those fit in to where we are dividing up our, our money and initiatives?
Be helpful if I use the mic. So we actually have a, a list that shows the, some of the supports that we have. But you'll see that in our High School Success, especially around our attendance efforts. And Director Fields, I might cold-call you real quick. Are there any specific efforts around attendance that you're seeing that are related to SIA and High School Success? So for those listening in public, she was saying that everyone has, each school has systems around tier one, tier two and tier three supports that are customized to the needs of those students, the challenges they have at getting to school?
And then I was just going to add, at middle school, we sort of shared some research-based response protocols that every folks are using and then bringing data back in January to say, did one person's systems at one of the schools work better than another? Are we seeing different and improved outcomes at one space versus another to then calibrate and come up with an aligned response?
Yeah, I just wondered if any of the funding for many of these grants was being, was allowed for us to be used toward our attendance issues, you know?
I believe it is, but we're going to look that up and get back to you on it.
Thanks.
Anything else?
I just know from experience what a really complex and kind of complicated system the Integrated Guidance piece is. And so I always appreciate the, the clarity and transparency in which you guys present all of this. Because it is, it's not easy. And when we're braiding funds and we're looking at so many different pieces, it's, I appreciate, again, the, the work it takes and the time it takes to really spell it out for our communities or how this all works, where all those different pieces fit in, how we're using that funding in a really purposeful, intentional and sort of thoughtful way. So thank you.
Neil? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right. We'll move on to our first of two action items. Resolution 2425-05 with Interim Director of Communications, Alex Plasky.
Hello again. Really glad to be here tonight. Planning for a bond is really a marathon. We have many miles yet to go, but this is a big moment in this race. As you know, TTSD voters last passed a bond in 2016. Time takes a constant toll and as you've heard from staff recently, the needs for investing in our buildings, grounds and in curriculum are very pressing. The bond resolution before you tonight represents the culmination of more than two years of work, including analysis from staff and from the community on the greatest areas of need for our facilities. It's also the result of two rounds of polling to determine what priorities resonate with our voters. We believe that the, that the proposal before you is best positioned to meet the needs of our students and our staff and receive the support of the Tiger Twelton community. Work like this depends on many pillars, from operations to communications to finance. But really none is more important than that community pillar. And I really want to thank our community volunteers. Karen Hugard's with us tonight in the audience. Because without that community support, we don't get anywhere. So that's really vital and I really appreciate that. And including the, the advocacy that is going to have to happen for this bond to pass. With that said, Darren and I are happy to answer your questions.
Any questions? And if there are no questions, I would entertain a motion.
I move that the Tiger Twelton School District Board of Directors approve the May 20th, 2025 Bond Measure Resolution, including the ballot title and explanatory statement language as presented.
Second.
Motion is made by Director Miles and seconded by Vice Chair Hymas. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll move to a coral vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we go to work. All right. Thank you.
And if I could, I'd just like to say a couple of things about this.
Yes.
Which is, we appreciate the, one, we appreciate the board's support on this. But we also appreciate the community support that we've received in the past and all that we've received so far and all the meetings that we've had leading up to this moment. And just when it comes to bonds and schools in general, I mentioned, I made that comment that we get kids for, for seven hours a day. And those are, over the course of many years, that's meaningful time. And for all of us, I think we can look back and reflect on the buildings that we spent time in, whether they were nice, whether they could have used improvement, whether there are places that there was something about it that inspired us. And we have the opportunity to create these learning spaces, these hubs for, for our students. And I think that's a generational investment that I just want to, to, to share with the board and with the greater school community. And I think that we have a lot of work to do if this is going to, to be approved by our voters. And it's something that we're, we're ready for that task because we know what's at stake here. And we also just know what is, what the opportunity is for future generations. So that's just something that I want to say as the board took action. This is something that we don't take lightly and we're really excited for what will be hard work, but also really meaningful work as well. So thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. And you have one more for us.
Last one for me. I'm told by someone that I care for deeply and trust implicitly that there's a procedural requirement that the board approve this abstract. So therefore, I pass it to you.
I move that the Tiger Twelton School Board of Directors approve the abstract of votes for the November 5th, 2024 election as presented.
Second. Motion is made by Vice Chair Hymas and seconded by Director Zershmead. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll move to a coral vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. At this time, we will be adjourning our regular session of the Tiger Twelton School Board at 8:38 PM. And we will now move into both, a different space to go into executive session, which will be convened under ORS 192.6602D to conduct the